I call this meeting to order. The RMLD Board of Commissioners. The meeting of the RMLD Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at the RMLD office at 2:30 Ash Street, Reading, Mass. This meeting is being videotaped for distribution to community television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and just to read the code of conduct. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions and comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Upon being recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is a role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comments or ensuing discussions. So with that, that's kind of the opening remarks, introductions. We have a citizen advisory board visitor. Do you want any comments, anything to say?
Yeah, no, thank you for having me here. I like to, you know, follow the Commissioners' meeting. We had our, we didn't have a meeting yesterday, and I think the last meeting we had was on November 15th. And the only two, two things that were discussed, if I'm reading from the agenda here.
Go ahead.
We had the audited financial statements and we reviewed the CAB policies, so those were the things.
Okay.
So there's nothing else to...
Okay, he's at the other, Dave's having trouble hearing the other end. Okay.
Hi, David. My name is Vivek Soni. I'm the new member on the CAB. I represent Linfield.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And there's nothing special to report.
Okay. Your first time here, so we welcome you.
Yeah, we'll try to speak up, Dave.
We'll try to speak up.
I like it better when we have it in the middle. Put it on a chair.
Maybe you can put it on a chair.
Yeah, put them on a chair right here in front of us, right.
Put it on a chair in front of us here, I mean...
That would work.
We're just moving you, Dave.
You're being moved, Dave.
Great, thank you.
We're trying to get you more central in the, in the room here.
Can you hear us now? Dave?
Dave, can you hear us now? Hello?
Yeah, that sounds a little better, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we have a request for, for somebody to speak to us on a public comment. Mary Ellen O'Neill, if you want to come on up.
Okay.
To the microphone, if you would, please. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Know the feeling well, Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Mary Ellen O'Neill from Reading. I wanted to expand a little bit on the comments I made at your last meeting about trees. And I did a little bit of research on, I'll just read this so people that might be listening and don't have this can hear it. Electric utility tree stewardship programs. And there's, these are three models. One is Waverly Utilities out in Iowa. It's a municipal utility that donates $10,000 each year to Trees Forever, an Iowa nonprofit organization that plants and cares for trees, prairies, and other natural resources in Iowa. A Vista, which seems to be a very large IOU out in Washington State, is designated a TreeLine U.S. Utility by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and that has five standards, including tree care and tree planting, that are set by the Arbor Day Foundation. And there are many utilities, municipal and IOUs throughout the country, that are, are part of that program. And the third one is PPL Electric Utilities down in Pennsylvania. They have a community roots program. It purchases trees and then provides these trees on a first-come, first-served basis to city and local government groups, environmental groups, and fourth graders. And their donations for 2018 have already been capped due to heavy demand. It's not the first year they've done it, but I guess demand is, has been increasing each year. So I just wanted to plant this seed and, and ask that the Board consider perhaps developing a tree stewardship program, not based on any of these three models, but something that would work in our area where we have, in Reading particularly, a strong tree department with our tree warden and things like that, that may have suggestions for where things are planted. And I'd like to go so far as asking that you consider $10,000 beginning, you know, on a yearly basis. I was thinking that, you know, a good tree is probably $300 to $500 each, so if you had $2,500 per community, that's five to eight trees per year, potentially. So I just wanted to mention these things to you and ask that as you prepare your budget for next, for fiscal year 19, that you think about doing something like this as we cut further into our, our trees, tree covers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks for listening.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
I didn't hear what the, what the example was in terms of the dollars that will contribute.
Basically, what Mary Ellen has asked, the, that we do similar to program to what's being done out in Waverly, Iowa, that we consider donating the amount of $10,000 to the four towns, divided equally, if I have that correctly, as part of the program to, for the planting and care of trees.
Okay, thanks, though. I didn't give you the amount.
Okay.
That certainly would be, would be in favor of that.
Can you, can you answer one question for me, Mary Ellen? What does it mean to be a TreeLine USA utility? What is, what does that mean? To be designated that?
It's, the National Arbor Day Foundation has, it has a number of different programs, and this is one of theirs where they work with electric utilities throughout the country. And they have five standards. One includes tree care, tree planting, acknowledgement of Arbor Day activities, and I forget the other two. But they have, they have a whole list on the National Arbor Day Foundation website of all the participating utilities. The one, the only one in Massachusetts that's listed is EverSource. But there are many, particularly out in the Midwest and the South, it seems. Not so many in New England, but...
All right. Go check out the website. Yeah. Thank you, thank you for the research.
Okay.
Okay. All right, very good. Just before we continue, I hope everybody saw the Chronicle this week. So we see the picture of the award of the million-dollar grant for energy storage, and I'm sure the general manager is going to cover that under her, under her report, I assume. And so we will, we'll leave that for, I'll leave that for, leave that, we won't steal the thunder from her. Okay. Next thing I have is the, the GM Managers Committee. First off, let me explain to everybody that because Dave is on the phone, that every vote we take tonight will be a roll call. Be a roll call vote tonight because Dave is on the phone. Okay?
Yep.
All right. So the General Managers Committee met since our last meeting to review the General Manager. The reviews were very positive at this point. We basically scored things on different categories. We weighted things in the category, and you know, we, the top category was 100%. The bottom was obviously zero, but the, the overall score was 99.2% in terms of the ratings that we, that we came up with between the five Commissioners. And the evaluations are kept by the Department here now. And basically, that, that meant that we recommend, what we were recommending to the Commission from the Subcommittee is that we have a 4.5% increase for the General Manager's salary with an additional $5,000 bonus that I believe she has the, that we gave her the discretion whether she wants to put that as additional Ikmacon or, or on term compensation. So that's, that's what the recommendation we came up with. So I do need somebody to make a motion for the Commission to, to, to vote on that, if you would, please.
Yes, so move to follow the recommendation of the General Manager Committee, as, as stated.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? You want to add anything?
I just want to say, you know, publicly that I speak, I think, for all the Board members, we're very glad to have Colleen as our General Manager. I think the scores reflect the Board satisfaction, but in addition to that, you know, the $1 million grant is just one of many examples that her and her very capable staff have done to make Reading a very productive and leader in the utility business. So thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Looking forward to working with you.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to add that, you know, I'm very impressed with Colleen's leadership here in the Department. I see two people that are sitting out here, both Hameed and Jane, that I see much different from the time before she got here. Much improved. So I think that's the...
He remembered he was toddlers. I've been... I'm 25 years still.
Thirty, 31. 31, let's get it right. Okay. So I've been moving the second. Dave, you want to add anything? Go ahead, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. I'm Dave Talbot here. I made a, sort of echo those comments. Thank you, Colleen, for the leadership that you showed at RMLD. We all appreciate it. It's been a great job for the community. The $1 million grant facility, really wanted to call forth utilities that are accounted.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. And I certainly couldn't do it by myself, so I'm, I'm very appreciative of, of the leadership on...
You mentioned in your memo that, you know, it's a big first, extra for Hameed, and so at least there, I would thank you, Hameed, as well, and for you all.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, very good. So it's been moving the second.
Take a vote.
Yep. All those in favor, please say aye. Mr. O'Rourke?
Tom O'Rourke, aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye.
John Stempak, aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Okay, very good. All right, great. So that is approved. Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so is it clear that that's retroactive to her fiscal start date in July 1?
Right, retroactive to the fiscal start. Okay?
Right.
Yes. Okay. All right. The next item I've got is the subsequent town meeting. So Colleen got up and we made a presentation at the subsequent town meeting. Presentation went very well. Those of you who were in attendance that night can attest to that. So I don't know if there's any much, anything to add, if you want to add anything to this presentation you made?
Mr. Chair, you may want to, I don't have anything to add, but for the listening audience, maybe they just need a soundbite on what the subsequent town meeting was, you know, what the subject matter was regarding it.
Okay. You want to, you want to address that?
Right. Each year during the town meeting, the RMLD has the opportunity to go over the previous fiscal year's highlights, including the outcome of the audit, which was clean and without a management letter, all the successes that we had within that fiscal year, and also an opportunity to go over some of the strategic visions that we have in our five-year plan out to our 20-year plan. This year, we were very proud to have introduced a high school art program. And as everyone knows, we, we went paperless on our annual report several years ago and started using some teenage artwork to shave our peak and then shred our peak, be efficient, get greener, go paperless. And then this past year, the high school that came in and did the art, we selected a first, second, third, and fourth, and the first-place winner donned the cover of our FY '17 annual report, which was, I mean, the artwork was just beautiful. The kids really enjoyed themselves, and it was, it's a significant savings to produce that annual report in-house. And I think it, frankly, it has a better quality than it was when it was being done professionally. And I'm very proud and honored to work with the employees that helped put that together, and, and I think the public appreciated it as well.
Okay. Very good. Okay. There was no citizen advisory board meeting, so there is no, nothing to report on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Comment? So I wanted to make a suggestion, I think because of, obviously, people's schedules, maybe we could, as a, hopefully help for Tracy, maybe we could consider sometime between now and the next meeting, putting a draft schedule for the year, you know, the calendar year. That way, if someone can't make it, they can swap off with another, because I think lately it's just everybody's been jammed, and I think that we have the dates in the calendar, similar to what we do at the payroll.
Okay.
More signatures out.
Right.
Because I know that would be...
Attendance to CAB meeting. Good thought. Okay.
Yep.
All right, very good. Okay, ready to move on? So the next one we have is the Board Minutes. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 15, 2017, which, which, which the Secretary finally got around to reviewing.
Thank you.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we, the Board approves the minutes of the November 15, 2017.
June 15.
Oh, June 15. Excuse me, June 15.
The September 14th of 2017 is not ready yet, so the June 15th minutes that we're approving. Second the motion? Moving the second? Any discussion? Or none? All those in favor, Mr. O'Rourke?
Tom O'Rourke, aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
John Stempak, aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Talbot, aye.
Okay, very good. We're on to the GM Report.
Picture, we'll have a look at.
We can put it in front of her?
This is me. Governor Charlie Baker, Hameed, Jane, and Commissioner Judith Judson, Tom Olilla, who helped to put together the, the grant with NextTerra Energy. So we're really excited to have received this award, and especially to be able to add something to our peak reduction portfolio that is now renewable. It's exciting to be part of that technology. So we'll be working with NextTerra Energy to build this. We're expecting it to be built before the peak of next year. It's a five-megawatt battery storage unit, lithium-ion batteries, and it discharges over two hours, so it'll make an impact on, on saving some overall costs to the transmission and capacity with the intent of, you know, continuing to stabilize our rate.
Wow, it's amazing.
Yeah. I figured you would be happy, Dave. So there was actually, there was...
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Dave.
It'll actually deliver the five megawatts in two hours?
Yes. That's correct.
Four point, four point five seven something.
So anyways, it was the Baker-Polito Administration Energy Storage Initiative. It was originally a $10 million grant that was going to be given out to various recipients. They ended up with 69 proposals, grant proposals, I believe 29 recipients, and they increased it to $20 million, and Reading was honored to receive the $1 million. And so when NextTerra builds this, we're actually using the $1 million split over three years to reduce the cost, the power supply cost from that. So that'll be passed on to all of our customers. So the project will be worked on with, between engineering and operations and Jane Parento's group, the Integrated Resources. So it's pretty exciting stuff, along with our community solar. We're really doing a good job as far as treading the peak and getting green, going renewable, saving the planet. We're doing all of that. Yay!
It's not even Christmas.
Not even Christmas.
Okay. You're doing the quarter of the updates you're doing, or is that him? Okay. All right, come on up.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
On that last point, there was this prior discussion about getting that being supported about what percentage of our portfolio is renewable at this point. Tonight, if we can have that for the next meeting, it would be great to help you understand what the characteristics of our portfolio are and what it will be after the battery as well.
May I?
Go ahead.
So Jane is here, and she's going to be giving her presentation, and I think she'll provide that information. It's about 13%, but when she gets up, you can, you can ask her some more questions as far as clean energy, renewable energy. I mean, there's a whole plethora of what green means, you know, carbon-free. So she can go through some of those questions if you want, Dave. Go ahead and move.
Yeah, it would be great to, to the presentation, because I don't know if you'll see it. If you can tell it after the meeting, it would be great. I mean, I think after, on that, it's a year anyway.
Okay. All right. Okay, very good. Hameed, you're up.
Yes. Good evening. Glad to provide you the report for the, for the recommendations that were made by the consultants, basically by Booth and Associates, as well as the UPG. When we did the testing of all the substation equipment over three years ago, just for the benefit of the new CAB member, Mr. Soni, we created baseline, basically by bringing contractor UPG to test all the substations. We found some problems and some issues that they were addressed, basically, on the report, as well as the Booth study, planning study we did in 2015. They identified some areas that need improvements, and this list is the result of those recommendations, basically, that, as good business practices. So if you could see that, you know, we've made lots of progress on those. And if you go to page two, you see item number 29 and item number 35. They were both recommendations that were made by Booth and Associates, the consultant who did the planning study. And item number 29 is about the Station 3. In Station 3, just to give you background, we had lots and lots of problems, the design issues, that they were not really addressed originally when the substation was designed. There were some control wiring issues, the relays were really outdated relays, we could only bring back limited information to the SCADA, which for operational purposes, it was, you know, it was not really the ideal situation. Also, the automatic bus transfer scheme between Bus A and Bus B wasn't working properly from the get-go. There also are some other problems that we are addressing, and that was, that's the high fault current, which is going to lead into high incident energy when they're operating the breakers inside the substation. And the reason is because the wrong transformers were designed, actually, or set up for this. So in order to address the fault issues, in fall, we have a project that it's going to, actually in spring, we're going to install these reactors that it's going to drop the incident energy to acceptable level. So we don't have to, you know, we would have bought arc flash. However, still the other issues that were picked up during this, actually, system analysis and also the testing, the bus transfer scheme, and also the control wirings that we had issues with, they're all fixed and they're all addressed. So it took us a while to do that, but now, you know, if something happens to one transformer, automatically the load is going to be transferred within 10 seconds, less than 10 seconds, to the other transformer. Before, we didn't have that capability. It was not going to be this situation. Somebody needs to go to the substation and manually do that auto-transfer. Now that automation is taken care of, and it's working now. So that's for item number 29, item, and also item numbers 51, 53 to 56 on page three. So these are all related to the issues that we have at Substation 3. Item number 35, it's a substation automation, which we, I'm glad to announce that, you know, we've done all the automations that needed to be done, ready for a smart grid, as well as the issues that we had at Station 4, that all the relays, you know, they're replaced. We had a problem that only one phase was brought into the SCADA, and we couldn't bring the information about the other two phases, so we didn't know what they were running at. And now we changed all the relays to the new generation of the Schweitzer relays, which we can bring more information back for operational purposes and for analysis, and also monitoring their feeders' performance. These are all done, taking care of the substations. They basically are in good shape for now.
Great.
Any questions?
Yep.
I mean, so what, I'm trying to remember, what was the timeframe for the, obviously it was more than a month ago, but what's, what was the window of time that we timed it?
The planning study was done, was a 20-year planning study. But most of these immediate actions that needed to be taken care of, it was like about between one to five years.
Yeah. You know, it's too, I mean, just roughly, it looks like, well, certainly over 50% is complete, which is great, and there's almost 30% in progress. And I assume that the, in, the alternate solutions, those are ones that are getting resolved, but not through the necessary, the recommendation of the...
Exactly. Part of, part of the problem to that being that, you know, they required, they asked us to, actually, the study said, to parallel some of the feeders coming out of substations. There is no duck bank really to do that, and we can't fit all those cables in one duct. So the alternate solution to that would be building a new substation in Wilmington. When we do that, we're going to transfer some of the load from Station 4, from Station 3, and pick up almost all the load from Station 5. And when we do that with that, that's going to solve that problem.
Right.
So right then, spending money and replacing cables with the bigger cable, which is not going to, or paralleling, which we can't do, so we figured we're going to wait until we build the new substation and reanalyze the performance of the feeders, and then if we need to make any improvements, we do that. That's why, you know...
Yeah, no, I mean, overall, I mean, like 90-something percent of it's actioned in one way. But the process, I want to compliment the team on, because, you know, John knows from his consulting experience, you know, a lot of times these reports end up in the drawer, you know, with some, some action, but not a lot. But I mean, we've, you've developed it, you know, managed it and report on it regularly, which is the keys to success, so I think that's great.
Right, thank you. We prioritize the ones that they needed to be immediate.
Yep.
From the safety stand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And that's what we've done, and now we're basically down to then other stuff that, you know, could possibly wait, and it's not the immediate concern. But, you know, we have plans for them.
Good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Sure, go ahead. So where is the Substation 3?
The Substation 3 is North Reading.
It's in North Reading?
Substation 4 is in Reading, and Substation 5 is in Wilmington.
Okay. And when was that originally set up?
The setup on the Station 3 was done over 12 years ago.
12 years ago.
It's fairly new substation. Station 4 is like about 20 years. And Station 5 is more than that, 25, 30 years. Station 5 is pretty much at the end of its useful life. So that's why we are looking to install a new, construct a new substation in Wilmington, to retire that substation. But actually, we're not going to retire it. When we build a new substation, that substation is still going to be in place. We're going to use whatever remaining life is left, and then after that, you know, we get rid of the equipment and probably use it as a switching station. That's what the plan is.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've got the organizational study now?
Yes. Thank you. Well, I apologize, because when you print this out, you can't tell really the difference between the hash marked and the solid, so I think it's the way the printer printed it. But I think the next time we give the update on next quarter, I'm going to change up the colors and, and actually, some of these, like, established planning culture that's ongoing, I think we, maybe we'll write them a little bit differently. But to just go through some of the areas, the main areas that we've been working on and have made some great headway, in Jane's group in the Integrated Resources Division, she's working on her strategic vision and roadmap for her entire group, which consists of both retail and wholesale. And she's working on putting that plan together in a visual, so that you can see it out over five years to 20 years. But even while she constructs that schedule, we've already started on some of the roadmap milestones that we've already identified that will be on there. That would include the cost of service study we just did, and then the rate adjustments we did to bring the subsidations back in line with best-rate utility practices, the renewable portfolios that we're working on, the rebate restructuring and the customer portal for rebates online, the risk mitigation on the purchase-supply... portal for rebates online, the risk mitigation on the purchase supply, purchases that we just had that presentation from Nextera and Jane a couple weeks ago. So there's a lot of milestones that we've hit already. I think it's just a matter of probably another, I put it into first quarter of next year to actually get a visual laid out for that roadmap. That's actually number 1.3. If we go down to 2.1 to 2.3, the succession planning, job descriptions, workforce development, those continue to happen. We are at a granular level, the next phase of our reorganization, which means we looked at it at a higher level to see what we needed. There was a lot of changes made, and now we are assessing each group individually. You know, each of the job descriptions, each of the organizational charts that are revised, the job description are rewritten, those have to go through the union. There's a, there's a significant process that happens when you're reorganizing individual groups. Right now, we're just finishing up with IT, and then we're going into tech services. We just started that yesterday. So those are moving along, and we're hoping to have that wrapped up first quarter next year. And that way, just about all of the succession plans, job descriptions, the organizational charts, it should all be completed. That takes us to 2.6 with filling vacant positions. So as we develop these org charts and some things shake out, you know, we post the jobs and we're going as quickly as we can to try to fill them. That brings us down to 3.4, where we had reorganized and expanded the engineering group, and we just recently hired two engineers. So we're very happy with that. They, they are not at a system engineering level, but they're, they have solid foundations, and Hameed's been working with them and training them, and we feel like they're going to be very successful in a short amount of time.
Great.
Wendy is still working on formalizing our business profit. I'm sorry.
Colleen, what's the, I know it obviously varies by the experience level you hire in, but on average, what's the time it takes for the person to get, you know, fully onboarded and, you know, productive when you hire a new engineer?
After they're hired or trying to hire them?
Once you hire them, so once you bring them in.
Oh, because trying to hire them is, is very difficult because of the lack of, you know, electrical power engineers in this area.
Yeah, so what's the cycle time for hire? Three months or four months?
Um, it can be significantly longer. It's, it depends on whether, I don't know, it's luck. We, Hameed and I have a lot of networks, and there just is not a significant amount of utility engineers in this area. So a lot of utilities will hire electrical engineers and grow them. But unfortunately, because we didn't have succession planning here previously, it would, you wouldn't be able to run a utility with all green people. So we are trying to have the right level of skill sets.
You know, green is good.
Yeah, what?
You know, green's good.
Well, green's good, unless it's, unless it's people.
What about internships? Does that work eventually?
Well, you know, you have to manage interns. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to establish the workforce first, and then, then we'll be able to bring in people. Because right now, we're training an awful lot of employees, and so, yeah, we have co-ops and interns are, we would like to be able to bring them in, but I think we have to establish what we've, we've already got. So to answer your question, once an engineer is hired, in electrical, it, you have an electrical engineer, distribution engineer, senior distributioner, and system engineer. And your proficiencies at senior distribution, I mean, system engineer, means you can be in charge of the entire system, the switching, the whole control room. I mean, there's a lot of responsibility. If you came right out of college and we took you and trained you and you went through our career development program, it would take between five to seven years for you to become a system engineer. So even if we get an engineer that maybe has five years of experience, if it's not in the utility industry, it's still going to take them probably about five years in order to become a system engineer for a utility for distribution. We also have transmission here too as well. And we like to train our engineers so that it's soup to nuts. You know, we, we do everything here. They know how to do it all. So if we're hiring a consultant, it's because we just don't physically have enough arms and legs to do it, not because we don't have the talent. So the training is, is pretty thorough, thanks to Hameed.
Yeah, that's a good development plan, too.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. Vivek?
Yeah, I had a question on 2.6.
2.6.
You said, you said you had vacant positions, I just wanted to know, how many vacant positions do you have right now?
We have several vacant positions, but as you're reorganizing, you may have a vacant position over here, but if the reorganization says that that body or that vacancy is better utilized over here, it may switch, and we use, we have to evaluate that. So right now, we have, we still have vacant engineering position.
One.
We have one vacant engineering position left in electrical. I mean, I could go through each of the divisions, but again, I would rather not say it publicly because we're still in the reorganizational phase, and if I say it and then, and then we switch it before we finish our org chart, it may be a little awkward. But I would say there's, there's about five to six vacancies. Where exactly they're going to land, we're working on that. Is that okay?
Yeah, because I thought the last time when we had met, you had said that you were concerned about engineering positions. So good, you got at least two out of those three filled, right?
Yeah, we just actually hired someone who came on the day of the storm. That was his first day, and he hit the ground running. He stayed the whole, he's still here. And he did a great job. He was really helpful right on storm day, so.
Great.
We're very fortunate.
Very good.
Is that, okay.
Yep. Good, thank you.
On, let's see, 3.6 on the communications plan. So Hameed has gone over his technology roadmap, so while we have a communications roadmap that actually Priscilla had worked on before she left, and Joyce has been tweaking. Hameed's outage management system and how we communicate to the public is going to be impacted and changing for the better, and so you'll see some revisions to that coming up. Cross-divisional management training is ongoing. If we go to the next page. A lot of the training comes under the employees' career developments, that's why I said I might revise this up a little bit. The risk management committee and enterprise risk management, that was the Nextera presentation, that was on power supply. There are other risk mitigation efforts in each of the groups that will be part of their vision, strategic plans. Wendy is still working on formalizing the financial and accounting business processes. She's in progress with that. So that should have been extended. Going down to 10.1, assigning a compliance manager. We just want to get all of our ducks in a row before we have someone come in auditing us, because that would be premature, so we're holding up on that. On the next page, asset management plan. We have a SpryPoint system in that's an interim work order system, but Wendy, over the next year, is going to be putting together a committee for a real work order system that we'll be looking at, that will address formally the asset management plan. And that takes care of 13.2 as well, and 13.3. 14.4, we collected all of our GIS and we've trained all of our engineers. We're currently putting the GIS standardized nomenclature on the mapping, and then we'll be able to get it out to the tablets, so that the engineers and the operations can use it in the field. The work management business process goes back up under the asset management that we already discussed. The enhance the current workplace, again, for probably the next meeting, I'd like that we, we take a tour of, so I can show you all of the changes in the efficiencies of the physical reorganization of the, of the building, and where people work, and how communication has been changed and enhanced. So that's enhancing the current workplace, and that's my update.
Actually, Wendy, I'll make this more for you. Do we, I can't remember from the financials, do we measure, do we have a return on asset metric? I can't remember. Or should we, I'm unsure if it really would apply. You know, something that would measure, I forget the right, John, help me out, do you remember this?
Return on assets, yeah, we had looked at, I think we had done a, just an initial comparison against some of the larger systems that were out there, and I think we found that we're equal to or better than, than other systems. But that was sort of a back of the envelope calculation.
Right, I guess what I was thinking too is just something that measures the efficiency of your, your assets, you know, it's a sort of return on, on your investment, so I don't know.
No, I don't think, I don't think we have anything in place formally, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I'm going to have to get off the call, I'm having a couple here anyway. Thank you very much, Colleen, for the report, and congrats on the battery grant. I'm sorry that I won't be able to hear Jane, we can't see it anyway, Jane presented on renewables, but if you could send that to me, I'd be grateful. And I think, as I, we've been having some discussions about what people wanted to change in the evaluation form, so maybe, maybe we could put that for January, as well as, it was a question about what the board wants to be updated about. Maybe that could be something we could set up in January, too.
Okay.
It's an idea.
Yeah.
I guess that would also apply any specific thing that we want to have prioritized, maybe that, maybe that's something that could be added for January for that, because of all.
Yeah, Dave, just a, I think on the review forum, I think the last, as I recall, the last recommendation there was that the commissioners were going to send Tracy inputs, and then you, I think you were going to kind of consolidate it, Tracy, or something, is that what I remember?
Okay.
Something, not that we couldn't discuss it at a meeting, but just to, to, you know, prevent a lot of back.
Yeah.
But the other, you know, what the board's looking for, that would be a good discussion, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
I find it hard to send emails in, if we did end up meeting it, would be, it would be a line of bits when we're all in the same room.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, I, I had one.
They might be, they may have people.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just letting him finish, okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thanks. So I had a question about.
No, no, we have a question. The CAB member has a question.
So this is, this is a good organizational study and this analysis of risk and.
The CAB member's asking a question, Dave.
Okay, so my question is around, nowadays, I think there's a lot of interest or there's a lot of concern about cybersecurity. And I know, so just wanted to understand, as you're planning here, how, how do you integrate cybersecurity and reviewing cybersecurity on an ongoing basis?
Right, that was a topic for discussion for, for one of our sessions, but I believe we've implemented some.
We, we have to follow some very, very, very strict guidelines on cybersecurity and NERC compliance, which is.
NERC compliance.
Yes.
You guys can set them aside, I'm sorry, I hope we wrap that up, folks, thanks very much.
All right, bye, Dave.
Good night, Dave.
Um.
Good night.
Good night.
NERC compliance is actually a full-time job, so we use.
Emergency broadcast system?
Yes.
We actually use a.
Attack in five minutes.
We actually use a consultant that a lot of the other utilities share, because it is a full-time job.
Okay.
To keep up with the NERC compliance, but we are 100% in compliance. It changes every day, so new compliance measures will come in, we have to analyze them, we have to report back on them. It's an ongoing effort.
No, no, thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. That it's, it wasn't a one-shot deal, but it's an ongoing process.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we, what we need, we invested in a software, a very secure software called N-Dimensions, that's a security software, which was actually installed back in 2015, and that has three levels of security, which are basically culling and encoding, so especially for the SCADA, like what Colleen mentioned, for the NERC, you have to.
Because you don't want someone to lock up your system, because you don't want someone to lock up your system.
No system is 100% bulletproof.
Right.
We've got it bulletproof to the best we can, of what we taught there.
Right, right. We're meeting, we're, we're in compliance.
We are in compliance, 100%.
But as, as things change, with technology changes and hacking changes, the, the NERC changes their compliances, and we have to update them, and we have to stay in compliance.
Good, thank you. Okay. All right. Good, so.
So I, I may.
Go ahead.
The, this is, this is very impressive. It appears that, you know, 90% or 80, 90% of this is accomplished by the end of your calendar year 2017, and moving into, most, most of it being early completed by mid-year 2018, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the goal. There, there are a couple of them, like, I mean, we're, we're changing the culture to, from reactive to proactive, which is changing the planning culture.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. I'm hoping that something like that would be considered completing that effort. You know, will everyone here thinking of planning mode? Probably not.
But I think the level of detail, though, is very impressive. I mean, it's really laid out very well.
Right.
Very thoughtful, and they have a Gantt chart that kind of shows when it's going to be done by, and if it's been done by. Again, it's impressive. If you don't, if you don't track something, you're out of control.
Right.
And so I think this is, is very impressive that way.
Especially in, you know, human capital issues, things are less easy to manage, you know.
Very much so.
Unlike physical assets.
Okay. All right, we need to move on. Okay. Jane, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to report on a couple of community relations events. We are currently sponsoring a holiday lighting decorating contest. Anyone who would like to submit an application just needs to take a picture of the outside of their house. They can go to our website, www.rmlg.com. They could upload the picture, and they need to do that by Sunday, December 17. After that period, from Tuesday, December 19 through Friday, December 29, RMLG customers will be able to go online and vote for, will have winners in each community. So if you live in Reading, there'll be Reading constituents or customers that you can vote for, similar in Wilmington, North Reading, and Linfield. As of January 3, we'll, we'll be posting winners from, one winner from each town, and those recipients will receive a $50 credit on their bill. So we encourage customers who have spent the time decorating their house to take a quick picture and upload it to the website. Additionally, we've completed the elementary school art contest. We've received all the, the drawings, and the, the children did a really nice job. We're planning on hosting two events for the award ceremonies, because we have 11 participating schools. And so those dates are Thursday, January 11 at 7:00 p.m. And Joyce will send this out to the commissioners as a reminder, with a snow date of January 16. And the second date would be a week later on Thursday, January 18 at 7:00 p.m., and that would have a snow date of January 23. And then I'd like to report on the October purchase power. If we look at this first graph, what we've looked at is the fuel charge adjustment, which is the, the cost that our customers actually pay us, and it shows up on, on the bill. We looked at, because we're reporting on October, we looked 11 months back, so the, the bar chart represents November 2015 through October 16, and the line chart represents November 16 through October 2017. And as you can see from this chart, our customers have be, have been receiving a reduction in the fuel charge. If you look over that 12-month period, the, the former one, the average cost was just a little under five cents over the 12-month period, or .0496. And then if we look at the current October and go 11 months back, it's dropped to .048. So that's a, a reduction of 3% that our customers are directly receiving that benefit, which is, which is, which is a good thing. The next graph, which we've been talking about, represents the purchase power capacity and transmission charge. And as we've been telling all of our customers, as of June of 2017, Reading, as well as other utilities that are in the NEMA, or the Northeast Massachusetts Zone, have experienced significant transmission increases. And that is depicted when you start looking at the, the July rate going up, because our fiscal year starts in July. And so when you look at that, those two, the bar chart being the, the former rate. And so when you look at that, those two, the bar chart being the, the former rate and then the blue line chart being the, the current, October going back 11 months, there's been about a four and a half percent increase. So the P P C T charge, which is a, a line item charge on customers' bill for this 12-month period, has averaged a little over five cents or 5.1 cents compared to last year, which was at 4.8 cents. And again, capacity's been the biggest driver for that. The good news about that is, starting in June, it's going to be going down and that again will be reflected right in this P P C T charge rate because the RMLD doesn't make any revenue or profit on this. It's a pass-through to our customers and a lot of our programs that we have with rebates and our, our peak shaving portfolio are designed to reduce those costs. So we're, we're doing our best in terms of trying to mitigate those costs. And then the final graph looks at our, the NIPA credit, which is another line item on the bill for residential customers. This is a benefit that residential customers receive by the RMLD having the NIPA contract, which is hydro power from New York. It was federally legis, it's a federal law that we have to give this credit to our customers. And this has actually been pretty fat, flat over the, the two-year period. It, it, it works out to be just under a half a mil. In first year, it's about .0049 cents and then it's about .0049 for the current year. So that's a direct benefit that our, our residential customers are receiving on a monthly basis. Just to answer a couple of Dave's questions in terms of renewables and carbon-free, when we look in the October report of the power supply, RMLD had 13% of renewable-generated projects and that encompasses hydro, wind and solar. RMLD has quite a few renewables in their portfolio and we're looking to expand that. We've met with the board a couple of months ago to talk about trying to get projects cited in our distribution area. We're working with three different suppliers to try to do that before the March deadline for the SREC contracts. And so those are ongoing. We're looking, Hamid has assigned engineers to work on system impact studies. So those numbers will actually be increasing in terms of the solar within our service territory, which helps reduce peak demand, especially during the summer and during portions of the transmission year. And so if we also look, you know, we're working with customers, you know, being green can be a variety of things. And so some, some customers, Hingham had a, an article in the paper where they're going 100%, I don't know if they call it renewable or carbon-free, I think. And so what happens is you're allowed to co, to count your nuclear projects within your portfolio. The RMLD elected to sign some long-term life-of-unit contracts way back in the early 80s, Phil, with Millstone and Seabrook.
Yep.
And so when you look at that within our portfolio, we go from 13% to over 26.6% because we have those nuclear projects which aren't emitting carbon into the atmosphere. So we are working diligently to look at the portfolio, to look at areas that we can continue to be environmentally friendly and meet the sustainability objective that we have in the policy that the board has established.
Any questions? Jane, do you see any, I know it's probably hard to predict, but like in two years, would you see that 13% being, you know, 15 or 18 or whatever?
Yeah, I do see that. As I mentioned, the solar projects are, you know, they'll add some power. We have hydro developers that are coming to talk to us. Colleen and I spoke to a wind developer. They're, they're working for Calpine up in Maine and we're, we're exploring that project. So they're, they like to, to work with municipals because we're a good credit risk. We structure the contracts, so we're only paying for the, we structure it on a kilowatt-hour basis, so we're only paying for the, for the power when it's being received. So I do anticipate that that would be increasing.
Grant will impact it, too.
Correct, correct.
If I may, Jane, I seem to remember, whatever happened to Quebec Hydro Power? Are they still hung up in court and whatnot?
Uh, well, they're looking to do the, to bring a lot of hydro power into the New England region, like over 2,000 megawatts of. I forgot what it's called and I apologize. But they need to build the transmission infrastructure.
So they don't have the infrastructure yet?
To get it down. We do have some Hydro Quebec entitlements that, which means we've put in the capital for some of those lines that are, the existing lines that are there, that people can bring power in and it's usually suppliers. So what we're, we're maximizing that right now by partnering with Energy New England and then we've, they partner with Green Mountain Power and we're receiving the benefits for that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I had a question. I heard something about a policy from the board on renewables. Is there a goal or does an intent?
I think we had a, we had it in our charter at one point in time.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be about, I thought it was 15% moving to maybe 17%. I'd have to go back and look, but this was years ago that we had instituted that.
I don't remember the exact numbers. I don't remember the exact numbers.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the, one of the caveats, we wanted to get cost effect or, or there was, there was a stipulation within the sustainability policy that it needs to be.
Low risk?
Low risk and so that we're not going out and purchasing, you know, 30 or 40 cent power.
Right.
To meet a goal because we wanted to be cost-conscious because that goes into the portfolio and it's reflected in the fuel charge for all our customers. So, you know, our group is working very diligently to get cost-effective projects within the portfolio. We think it's important and we think it's achievable because the developers are willing to work with us.
Can you take that policy up and forward it to him?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
And I just want to know, is there any pressure from the state? Because the state has some, you know, big, long-term guidelines as to what the state wants to accomplish and I don't know if that comes through to utilities.
I'll, if, do you want me to speak to that?
Go ahead, if you would, please.
We're actually discussing that now with the state. We're deregulated and so regulating us and taking away local control is a concern. So on one hand, you have the deregulation, regulation issue and on the other hand, you have what the state would, would might like to have, you know, 100% renewable by 2050. And so there's a lot of discussions that are going on with that and we meet with a lot of our other managers and other utilities in our, like the MEAM and NEPA and, and associations that have to do with the municipal, locally-owned utilities, to discuss how we're going to approach the discussions with the state on something because you don't want to lose your local control, but at the same time, we also want to be part of, you know, clean energy. So it's, it's a complicated conversation and I'd be glad to talk to you offline about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Wendy, you're, you're next.
Good evening.
So the financials that are in front of you, I'm reporting on October 31st, so the first four months of the fiscal year 18. And if you look quickly at the balance sheet, you notice that our cash is down almost $4 million, but quickly looking at the receivables and the payables, you can tell that it's reflective of what's happening there. Our receivables are up about a million and our payables are down about 3 million. So there's the difference right there. It's just a timing effect, once again, that we, you know, consistently discuss. And then our restricted cash, you noticed the, the large jump and most of that is due to the $5.6 million that was added from the pension trust. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the second page just goes into the detail of each cash account, so the unrestricted and the restricted. And then you can see the difference in cash. So not only did we increase our restricted cash by the pension, we're gaining interest on many of the other accounts that are increasing the funds there. Page three goes into specifically talking about our capital funds. So I'm just giving you, I think you're familiar with this report, giving you the balances of the depreciation fund balance at the end of fiscal year 17. So basically what we're starting with is $2.4 million and then we added $2.5 million to the construction fund from the operating funds. And then we show the interest amount being earned for the first four months and our depreciation transfer. We take our $4.3 million of depreciation expense and monthly we accrue it and we transfer the money to the, the depreciation fund so that we can utilize those funds for construction. And then you have your total use of capital funds, about $1.6 million through October, which leaves us currently with 4.7 of capital funds. So then when, when we talk about the profit and loss statement, the operating revenues versus our operating expenses, I just wanted to show you this bar chart here and just comparing base revenue to operating expenses, just to kind of see where we are. And if you look at the red, it shows FY17, four months of FY17 compared to the green, which is four months of the current FY18. And in FY18, $9.4 million of base revenue has decreased from 9.6 in FY17. So it's about a 2% decrease, but staying consistent, we have decreased $6.3 million of expenses from six point, almost $6.5 million. So it's, it's about the same, 2 point, 2% decrease in revenues as is 2% decrease in expenses. Okay? The next chart just gives you a little bit of a view of our operating and maintenance expenses from FY17 as compared to FY18 as compared to the budget. So as I just stated, we, we've decreased 2% and looking at the budget, we are also under budget in every area of, well, we're, overall, we're under budget, I should say it that way, I'm sorry. Overall, we're under budget on our operating and maintenance expenses. The third chart, so I just wanted to touch on base revenue and kilowatt hour sold. So I wanted to do a 12-month comparison from November of 16 through October of 17, as well as the previous year, 15 to 16, just to kind of go over, you know, try to look at a little bit of a trend here. And so if you look at the orange bar as compared to the gray, that shows you your base revenue and then your lines, your yellow and your blue is your kilowatt hour sales. So when we, we look back 11 months and we compare this timeframe, we notice that base revenues have increased for the 12-month period, with the exception of August and September. And then when you look at the kilowatt hour sales, they're consistent, they're significantly lower for August and September as well. Your kilowatt hour sales are about 4.1% lower for FY18 than they are from 17, FY17. And as a result of the lower sales, as we discussed, 2% decrease in the revenue. Any questions on that?
Just one question, if I may, and that's the, if we were to look at it on a longer basis, and I know, I know you don't have the data here.
That's right, yes.
Over a couple of years, is that consistent with a, this sort of slow decrease in our overall kilowatt hour sales?
I believe we were flat up till now and I just, it's just the July and September that's kind of, you know, it could have been weather-dependent.
Sure.
It's not, we're not positive, but.
So it could be just a variation with the year.
It really could be, yes.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions about that?
Yeah, I guess maybe just, maybe it's more Colleen, so obviously we'll track meetings-wise, but do you see anything that would impact the, the revenue growth in a, in a positive way? I mean, we've got a lot of things, initiatives going on, but it's hard to measure the results, I guess. But I guess really the question is, do we sort of see it flat, being a percentage two down for the rest of the fiscal year or do you see that as maybe increasing slightly or?
I can let Jane speak to that. I think that we're a little bit flatter, a little bit lower because the weather was different last year.
Yeah.
Weather is the biggest impact, you know, and plays a major role in that and.
Although you.
Cold winter and that will increase our sales. It's just, weather impacts the sales and I think, as Wendy showed you, we build July and August, in August and September, and that's when we had to decrease. So this past summer.
Yeah.
Was significantly milder than the previous summer. I mean, if we have a cold winter, that will impact that. So we monitor it on a regular basis and, and, you know, we meet and discuss these things to, to make sure that we stay on target as, as well as we can.
Although a relatively new input is the, is the cost efficiencies, too, right?
Correct.
As we, as we get more cost efficient, we could have an increase in revenue, but actually a decrease because the costs are higher.
Right. Where, Chairman, may I?
Go ahead.
And, and as Hamid spoke earlier, and he'll talk about it a little bit more when he does his presentation on the new substation in, in Wilmington, there's several areas over there that are still in an economic development growth that we're hoping that, you know, that will happen. So we have some, we're, we're trying to offset it with, you know, demand reduction techniques and, and economic growth incentives and, you know, so we have a lot of different ways that we're trying to stabilize the rate.
Yeah, no, I, I certainly not a, I think that's really the point, I guess I was driving at, you know, in a, in, I can't speak so much on the utility side of business, but in, in a regular business, that would be concerning over time to obviously see revenue. It's although it's not a huge decline, but I think it's what you said, it's tracking the new initiatives and managing it and the weather certainly is a variable and, you know, most businesses as impacted as it would be in the energy business, but it's good.
One quick question. Was a statement made about the weather being a big factor on the low, the, the peak demand? So like in winter and, because summer I would imagine would have a lot of air conditioning loads that would really make a difference. And so I think if you're looking at degree temperature days or something like that, do you all look at it that way and, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
It's the weather every day, you know, while summer and winter can be more extreme, you can have milder shoulder months, more extreme shoulder months. Weather is significant.
Yeah.
So, okay.
See, we check our fidelity accounts, you check the weather channel, right?
Do you have another question? I want you to ask the question so that.
No, 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 no. So the question was, is there a correlation between demand and, you know, historical temperature profiles?
Yes.
I can forward you some slides that I presented here on 10-degree days.
Okay.
And that may be helpful to you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's good for you.
Heating and cooling and, and cooling and cooling, cooling especially, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to speak to the?
Yes, go on to the next one.
Okay, sure. So I was asked by the board to come up with somewhat of a cost analysis for the possibility of changing financial reporting from fiscal year to calendar year. So as, it's a little difficult and challenging to come up with a, with an avoided cost, I would call it, but I gave, we gave it our best shot here. So a one-time, six-month audit fee would be necessary in order to change the year and that's approximately a $36,000 cost. But then if you look at.
So what is our present audit fee?
It is $36,000.
36, so it would be, it'd be the same?
It would be because it would be a one-time, they'd have to do another audit, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, it's in, it's in an off-period time. I mean, the.
Actually, it's, it's a busier time for them.
Actually, busier time for them?
Yes, it is.
You've spoken to them?
Yes, unfortunately.
Can I make a comment, though?
Yes.
So you'd have to do two, but then you don't have to do another one for a year.
That's right.
Right.
You know what I mean? So it's, it's not really two in one year, you're, you'd do it a second time quicker, but then it's pushed off longer.
Let me, let me give a little background.
So I'll split the difference with you.
Let me give a little background here. Right now, the department reports on a fiscal year, a June year-end. The regulators. The regulators, whatever they, whatever the department calls themselves these days, Department of Public Utilities.
DPU.
Oh, I got the right term.
Yeah, it's back to that.
Okay. Their actually reporting is on a calendar year. So we actually have two closings that go on during the year. And it's a concern about now, you know, are we, you know, the ratepayers, you know, I don't think it was that big a deal at one point, but now, you know, my concern is the fact the ratepayers are now paying more maybe than they should be at this point. And so that's why I have brought this topic forward at this point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Isn't there also, it seems to me, a town meeting or, in thinking of town meeting, from the planning of the town budget, isn't it more useful for them to have us on a calendar year in terms of them planning or?
I don't know. I don't know that fact, that I don't know. I don't know. Okay, go ahead, Wendy, now that I agree in the background.
Sure. So what we tried to come up with collectively is the idea of what it actually takes us to get six months of one fiscal year and six months of another fiscal year to get a DPU report that's accurate. So we have a lot in the power supply side, they have to do more calculations, and net plant calculations have to be redone and recalculated. We have to take the balance sheet and combine that, six one year, six another year, as well as the profit and loss statement. There also is a inefficiency in the budget review because when we're reviewing, when we're trying to do the budget, we try to use the DPU report. So the calendar year financials helps to mitigate these inaccuracies of submitting premature data of the rates, which currently, right now, is when Colleen and Jane and Hamid are talking about rates and how they're going to go. And it's very difficult without the financials being complete, so, which depends on the power supply costs, which typically are not publicized until late March, as we know from our budget process. So we came up with about approximately fifteen thousand dollars of avoided staff salary costs because the extra time it takes to just get these two sides of each year together and these extra calculations, it takes a lot of time and effort.
So you're saying it's more efficient to be on a calendar year?
Oh, it certainly is.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Keep going, Wendy.
So then, so then there are some things that you just can't measure, but they, but they do hold water. So we also have some inefficiencies of having the town and RMLD finalize the fiscal year reports at the same time because this creates great challenges for the town. It creates excessive demands on the town of Reading when we're trying to get reporting from them for our reporting.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
That was ours.
Yes. This also will help alleviate the town concerns of accounts payable cutoffs and the double warrant reporting, which you're all familiar with.
Can you explain that, explain that?
So at the end of the fiscal year, what happens is we have to cut off our vendor payments at six-thirty, we have to have a warrant, the payables warrant that you sign, one for the FY, so last year it was FY seventeen, and then you have to have your vendors that you're paying for services or product, services or, yes, products that you're buying in FY eighteen, and you have to split that. So this goes on for about three or four weeks. So it causes extra work for the town, it causes extra work for us, and it actually causes extra work for the management review, for your review, you know, so that would, they only have to do that, the town only has to do that because their books are closing at the same time as ours.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So then, of course, we know the challenges of getting the actuarial reports on time, the OPEB and the pension reporting, this could change. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be waiting necessarily, we'd have it done and then close the year versus the other way around. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then vendor cooperation, as little as you may think this, or anybody for that matter may think this means, vendor cooperation becomes a large part of the inefficiencies, especially with those payable cutoffs. Because a lot of vendors either close their doors for a month or they go on vacation and they become a little lax because of vacations, they don't, they're not quick to finalize and get us all of our invoices. We're trying to, you know, get an audit together for August, and we're not getting invoices for the previous year until the beginning of August. And it becomes very difficult to manage this. Takes a lot more time and energy, of course. And then the same thing with staff, of course, summer is a high vacation time, and it takes every department at the RMLD to get an audit accomplished. So when you have a lack of department staff, simply because everybody likes the summer and wants to go on vacation, that becomes challenging as well. Not that it's, you know, it's just another factor.
So is your, if I may, is your recommendation to move to a calendar year?
I would certainly recommend that we move to a calendar year.
And what limits us to move to a calendar year?
Well, right now, I think we're in the information stage. Let's be in the information stage at this point.
Well, it's practical matter within the window, at which time, if we don't do it, we've got to wait another year to decide, right?
Right, yes.
Do you have something to add, Colleen?
Yeah.
When I worked in Danvers, we were a fiscal year and we changed to a calendar year and it was, it was night and day. It really, when you're trying to do, I was telling Wendy this morning, when I'm trying to review the budget and I'm used to looking, you know, because that was a big benefit in Danvers when we changed to calendar year, now I'm looking at the DPU report and it's the right numbers. It's not half of one year and half of another year, and then I'm trying to, you know, fit it into, I mean, so there's a lot of extra work that goes into splitting it and then trying to put it back together so that you can figure it out. And, you know, we switched it over in Danvers and there wasn't a big political problem with it. I think one of the things Wendy was mentioning is, you know, we're, we're trying to calculate the rates for next year now because the town wants them now so it can segue into their budget, but we're so preliminary that it makes me a nervous wreck until we actually get our, our numbers next year.
Yep.
And hopefully, you know, our preliminary draft, draft, draft is on the money, which is, you know, is a little difficult, especially with the volatility of power supply. And, but we know the town wants to get the numbers in their budget, but if we had our numbers all set and they weren't working, waiting for a segue at the same time, we're doing our budgets at the same time. So it just becomes a little bit, you know, I don't know, maybe, I don't feel as comfortable with the numbers that we're giving out.
Yep. So to answer, to maybe backtrack on your question, John.
Sure.
It'd be up to the board to make this decision and devote this, is to go to a fiscal year. I think we need to have all five of us here to do that, quite frankly.
So, so would we, from a timing perspective, if we're here in the January timeframe, would that be appropriate?
I think so.
Topic of discussion?
I think so, yes.
I'd like to ask that to be put on to the agenda?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, well, just to piggyback on that, would you, I would think if you're going to have a calendar fiscal year, if you wait until Janu, I mean, there's things you need to do or sensitize your vendor, I mean, if you wait till January, isn't that too late to?
We would do it the following year.
We'd do it the following year.
Yeah, we'd have another budget process starting in September.
Oh, that's what I was, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if the intent was, if there was a sense of urgency to do it, we'd have to make a decision.
No, we'd have to make a decision now, yes.
Decide it in two thousand nineteen.
What was your expectation?
I honestly didn't have one because I wasn't sure which way the board wanted to go.
Yeah, well, the thing that was true was Wendy and her people were busy with the audit too.
Yes.
And this is why this was, this was not presented earlier.
No, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Right, yeah. We held off until the audit was completed.
Right, well, and the audit was prolonged, unfortunately, so we didn't have a choice in the matter.
Okay, very good, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one question. What is the budget year for the town of Reading? Is that?
Town of Reading is from, through June.
Through June, so that's like, matches the school year budgets, right?
Your town has the same year end. All the towns have June year ends.
Yeah, yeah. So that'll be a fact that, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, but let me, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but if, is there, because I want to be respectful, Phil, you've got more knowledge of this than I do, but if it's a good thing to do, I mean, it's either now or a year from now, so the question is, if there's value to do it and there's no obstacles, then really it's just getting the board together to make a decision. So I just wonder, is that a?
Well, there's some other background here that you, I'm probably, Jane lived through the ills, what we call the ills. This was recommended as one of the correction of the ills, the period called the ills. So I'm not sure, you know, how sensitive the town is to this, and I think that's why I would.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that was qualifying my mark by knowing that, yeah.
Isn't that two hundred years ago?
That's, yes, that is actually, two thousand and one. So that's why I brought it up now again.
Maybe we have a new level of confidence.
Yes.
I will tell you, I would like to tell you that the auditors are on board, they're ready when we are, just so you know.
And I actually had talked to the.
Is it possible to get that in writing from them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I actually had talked to the town manager when I first got hired.
Yeah.
And said, I'd like to change it to calendar year, that was four years ago, and he said he didn't have a problem then, so.
Okay.
I don't, I wasn't here for the ills, but I don't, I'm not really sure why that recommendation was made, it's not like the town would have any less or more control, it would be the same, it actually would just be more efficient for us and more efficient for them. They would get better numbers for their input, so that may have been something that was implemented, but I haven't quite grasped how that was going to correct something. I think there was, could have been other measures that I think have already been put in place to prevent those types of actions in the past.
And just to ease your concern, Tom, if it was decided in January, the accounting department could pull it off.
There's a can-do attitude.
Well, what I was getting at though, I mean, I'm just going from my own experience with the budget process, if you had made a decision in January, I'm sure there's vendors and people that, because you run into the same problem, no one's going to.
Well, no, actually, in December is when most companies, and I only know this from past experience in my other life, most companies are actually cleaning up their books, they're trying to get all their inventories in order for year-end tax results.
Yeah.
So they want everything cleaned up.
But people who do business where they're used to us having a closing in June, so they, they don't worry about getting something in December versus January.
They may though for their own books, that's all I'm trying to say. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I mean, I was, I'm fully supportive of it, so it's, whatever we decide. I would say, whatever we do, if it's next year, we ought to plan, like you said, Phil, to have it on the agenda for January.
Right, right, so we'll put on the agenda for January. Tracy's already got that. Okay, very good. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Yep, very good. So Hamid, you're up.
Hamid, you're already up.
Come on, he's up again.
All right. Encore.
Well, I'd be glad to give you the report for the month of October, the spending expenditures, basically, on the capital authorization projects. On the first slide, you see the list of all the specific capital improvement projects that board approved and we budgeted. So on the left, you see the description, on the second column from the left, you see the percentage completion. For the month of October is the next column, you see all the expenditures for that month, the year-to-date actual, and then the budgeted, and then the remaining balance for each one of those projects. So in a nutshell, we're making good progress, steady progress on those projects. Most of the heavy construction projects are coming in the spring, so you're going to see heavy expenditures on those. The next one is the routine construction, capital constructions. Basically, those projects, capital improvement projects that are not so specific and we cannot really predict, they go in this bucket. To give you an example, for instance, oil spill, we don't know how many oil spills we're going to have and when they're going to, you know, so anytime you take the transformer down, it's an expense, and when it goes back up, that's a capital. Another one is the storms, the other categories like underground subdivisions, they knew, we don't know how many they're going to go in each year or how many we need to repair. So all of those that, you know, when we build something, they are capital that are charged to these projects and it goes in this bucket. So to cut the long story short, in month of October, we spent hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred twelve dollars, that brings the year-to-date for four hundred eleven thousand two hundred sixty-three. This is for a fiscal year, FY eighteen. So I'm expecting that number to go up to one million, which usually we put one million dollars in this bucket for this type of activities. The next slide, you see the facilities, IRD, Integrated Resource Department, Jane's group, and IT, Wendy's group, the capital projects, basically there's not, there's not much going on those, but you see the expenditures for each specific department or division. In the chart below, you see, you see the, all divisions, basically, year-to-date, for the month of October, we spent total together three hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars. The year-to-date for fiscal year is one million six hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-four, we budgeted seven million six hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred twenty-one, and the remaining balance is six million. I checked with Wendy the last time, we're closing the date, I guess in November, we're up close to two million dollars, this number, so. And it's going to go up in month of December, probably two and a half to two point six million, so we're making steady progress on those. The next category is the routine maintenance, these are the number of maintenance programs that we started back in two thousand fifteen when we identified the problem area and when we went from reactive to become more proactive. So, and that these categories, you see that, you know, we're making steady progress again for the pole replacements, pole inspections, we do ten percent of the RMLD-owned pole inspections a year, which amounts to six hundred forty to seven hundred poles per year that we test. And I'm glad to announce that, you know, well, the first time that we tested, we had like about thirty-seven percent the first year, and now the last report that I got was down to five percent.
Wow.
So we're making progress, and then, you know, we didn't have any condemned, so we had some failures, that we take care of those based on the priority and where they are and how, on the list of priorities. The quadrant inspection of the feeders, these are the feeders that the crews, they ride around and checked for trouble, signs of troubles, to address them before anything happens. The manhole inspection program, we're making progress on those, porcelain cutout replacements, the tree trimming, it's really going well. I did a little research, more dug into after the last time that Mr. Kelly was concerned about, you know, the percentages that we had for two thousand seventeen year-to-date, we had twenty-nine percent because that's all the numbers they came up through, you know, through the number of troubles and the areas that we had. Compared to the five years average, you're going to see that, you know, in the last slide, that it's shrinking, the tree trimming is working. We are not completely done with the three-year cyclic program that we started, because we started that program in two thousand fifteen, and that three-year cycling is going to end in two thousand and eighteen. For five years, and now we're up to five years because, you know, it's, because of the budget reasons. So we started with three years, then went to five years. So the tree trimming is going well, the substation maintenance, we do the infrared every month at the substations as well as the industrial parks, looking for signs of troubles. And I'm glad to announce that so far we haven't had any actually, the last time we had it, it was back in, I guess, June for just one capacitor bank in analog that we fixed the bushings, and that was it, basically.
As soon as you stop looking, you'll have it again.
Yeah, I know. It's a good thing routinely we monitor that. I'm going to add another category, just for the sake of the interest of what this program and benefits of this program, and that's for substations, I mean subdivisions upgrade. Lately, we've had lots of those old substations that we see the transformers, you know, because they're outdated and the underground cables are old. So I had the staff to prioritize those and go with the list of, you know, we've got like about twenty, thirty subdivisions, and based on the age, we're going to address those and put that in capital authorization projects so we can address so many a year and upgrade them, so they're not failing.
And these are the undergrounds you got?
These are underground subdivisions.
Which is mostly linfield, I.
Linfield, right, and some in North Reading, few in Reading, and some in Wilmington. The last substation that we started, you know, actually cut off by surprise, was Shasta Drive in Wilmington. And that was the, that was problematic because we had the transformer that, you know, a tree grew right underneath the pad, lifted the pad, and, you know, caused some damage. And then the cables, cable failed, so we had to rip the section and, you know, fix it. So, and this is the problem, but the problem is once you open up the can of worms, now you're going to have to let them all out, right? So this is another problem. You fix one transformer that you get into, you think it's trouble, then the next one right next to it, you know, you see, oh, can't leave this, I'm going to have to fix that one too. And one thing leads to another. So you're going to see the report on that come in on the future months for the subdivisions upgrade. The next slide shows. slide shows the devil poles, basically, the ownership. We have 50%, 50% RMLD, 50% Verizon, the custodial in the North Reading, and also the, in the North Reading, it's RMLD, and also Reading. The linfield and Wilmington, it's Verizon. So, and you see the split in the territories, basically. These are the custodials that we're talking about. So, the next po, the next slide shows the engines. Engines is a program that it's shared between the utilities, basically, who's the next one to go and fix this stuff or transfer the assets. In the linfield, RMLD has three, five, five transfers to do. In Town of Reading, we have 29 transfers and 70 pole bots that need to be removed. In North Reading, we have 13 transfers and 31 pole bot. In Wilmington, we've got 31 transfers, and pulling the poles, we got four. We're making, made a good progress within the past few weeks in pulling the pole bots out of the ground and, you know, completing those, about, we did about 15 of them, and by end of the next week, we're going to do one of their, between five to 10. So, we pretty much, we keeping up with them. This is actually, as I see these devil poles, I see them as a good sign, meaning we're making progress in upgrading the system. And then, you know, I know, they, they do look ugly. We don't like them either, but, you know, it takes time, really, for transfers. We usually, you know, we do the transfer in timely manner, but when it comes to Verizon and Comcast, you know, we don't have any control over those, so we have to wait until they complete their transfers before we pull the bot out of the ground, the pole bot. The next slide shows basically our reliability, health status. The SADY, KADY, and SAFI, you see, all of those numbers are well below the regional and national averages. The bar, the blue bar is the national, and the brown bar is basically the regional averages, and we're doing very well across those categories. So it shows that, you know, we're making progress, especially that SADY, you see, that the SADY and SAFI, these two, they usually go together, and because, you know, the, the trend is going downward, that means that our maintenance program is working, which is good. The last slide basically shows you, on the right, the annual average, the five-years average. You see the equipment, we had like, in average, we had 65 equipment failure, the trees, we had 55, the wildlife, we had 42, and the other categories, you see, the numbers are pretty much very minimum. On the left, you see the year-to-date at the end of October. This includes the storm numbers also. You see the equipments are shrinking, basically, we got 28, the trees, we had 35, even though the storm was severe on the, on October 29th, Sunday, October 29th. We had number three, and all, most of them, they were actually tree-related, but we, we are not doing too bad on, on that category. The wild lives are 33, because we increased our lifeguards, so saving animals from getting electrocuted, and saving our assets from getting damaged. So it works for both. We're both happy.
Glad you put in the size of the circle. It does show it's all-
Yeah.
-shrinking, yeah.
It's all shrinking, yeah. Especially, that was my concern, because after Mr. Kelly mentioned about, you know, how come the percentages they come in about, but we changed those percentages to actually absolute numbers, and, you know, that shows now better comparison. It just worked out the last time, the way that, you know, well, in those categories, the tree came out 20%, 29%, same as the five-years average, 29%, which seems like, you know, we're not making progress, but in reality, we're making good progress. Any comments from the GM?
Okay.
I don't like the circle chart. I just don't like it. I think we should do it a different way.
Okay. We can talk offline.
Yes, you should. Yes, okay. Any questions for the board?
All right.
Nobody? Okay, very good. You're doing the, the-
Yeah, the bids.
Procurements, too, yes.
Yeah, sure.
So that's the first one. You want to give us a setup, and then we'll get the motion?
Sure, the first one is the, let me take, take, just make sure I-
The janitorial?
Yeah. The janitorial services, this is the chapter 30B bid. The bid went to 44 companies, and three were responsible, responsive bidder, and basically, they provided the, all the documents that we requested. The lowest responsible, responsive bidder was with Transcent Maintenance Services for $67,325.40. That's a three-years contract. The reason that it came out of it, the reason we're going out again, because, you know, we weren't so happy, we pleased with the previous janitorial services that, you know, was provided, provided by the previous company. They weren't doing a good job, so we had to terminate the contract, and then we went out to bid for this new contract. This one is by much better, you know, and also they have good recommendations from the people that they used to work for, and have provided services for. So, we also took a couple of areas out of them to save some money. That's like harvest building, and also the operation, the garage area. That's going to be done, cleaned by our maintenance department, so.
Can I, can I add a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Because when you're paying to clean square footage, but all you're doing in that square footage is sweeping, it, you're not getting your value, so we just took them out.
Right, okay.
So they're just large, flat, square footage areas that were being swept.
Good, very good. You read the motion, please?
Yes, a move that bid IFB 2018-13 for janitorial services be awarded to Transcent Maintenance Services, Inc., for $67,325.40 pursuant to MGL Chapter 30B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Seconded?
Seconded motion?
And moved seconded. You have Dave officially going off at a, at a particular time now, so I don't really, we need to do roll call votes at this point. So it's just, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Proposed, that motion carries. Let the record show it was 3-0. Okay, move on to the next one?
Thank you. The next one is IFP 2018-17. That's the Cooper Power Systems or Compatible Meters and Equipment for AMI Mesh Network. You know, we bought this system not too long ago for club 500, to fix the problems that we had reading these meters. They're working great. It's a great product. So, we sent a bid out to 15 companies, and we got, received the proposal from two, Eaton and Wesco, and the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Eaton for $83,199.36. The Wesco basically was not responsive, because they didn't provide codes for most of the categories that we asked for. So, this one is being awarded to Eaton. Eaton-Cooper is the same company they joined, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Move that proposal IFP 2018-17 for Cooper Power System or Compatible Meters and Equipment for the AMI Mesh Network Expansion and Migration be awarded to Eaton for $83,199.36 pursuant to MGL Chapter 164, Section 506D on the recommendation of the general manager.
Seconded motion?
Seconded, been moved seconded, discussion. I see none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Let the record show, it carried 3-0.
Thank you, sir.
Next one, please.
The next one is IFB, it's 2018-19, line truck chassis and trailer inspection, preventive maintenance, and the repair services. That's for inspection of the trucks, as it mentions, and the preventive maintenance on those. We sent a bid for, to seven companies. The sealed bid was, were received from the companies Taylor and Lloyd. There's only one bid that was actually received, sealed bid, and that was for the amount of $151,462.31. That's a three-year contract again. You know, they're a very reputable firm, and, you know, they dip in, they're doing a great job.
Okay.
Move that bid IFB 2018-19, line truck chassis and trailer inspection, preventive maintenance and repair service be awarded to Taylor and Lloyd, Inc., for $151,462.31 pursuant to MGL Chapter 30B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
You said a quick question, Phil.
Second the motion, please, first.
Seconded motion.
Okay, now ask the question.
Phil, Phil, Hameed, did you say there was no other bidder?
Yeah, there was no, there, nobody else, you know, this was the only one who responded. That's the only one that I have. We sent to seven. Some of them due to the timing, and you know, they don't have time ready to, and we are too small for them.
Yep.
Some of them, you know, they, they're just, the time of the year that they don't want to participate, unfortunately. We don't have any control over that, but it, it was advertised, we sent them, we could give them ample time to respond, and there was only one that responded.
Okay.
The next one is the same, too.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Yeah, maybe, too.
Yeah, okay. All right, further discussion?
Yep.
I see none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Again, let that motion, the motion carry, let the record show 3-0. Okay, go on, the next one.
Thank you, sir. The last one is IFP 2018-20, line truck lift equipment inspection, preventive maintenance and repair services. The bid was sent to four companies, and basically, we received the, the response from only one, James Kylie. The same situation, only one responded. It's a three-year contract for the total amount of $111,495.
Okay.
Interesting. Shall I make the motion? Move that bid IFB 2018-20, line truck lift equipment inspection, preventive maintenance and repair service be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for $111,495 pursuant to MGL Chapter 30B as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Seconded?
Seconded motion?
Yep. Same question? We've only got one bid on this one?
One bid? That's only one, yeah. This one, the same situation.
Okay.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bless you.
Further discussion? I see none, all, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Proposed, that motion carries. Let the record show 3-0. Okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Any questions, any?
Okay.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
So now we're just down to general discussion. You'll have the email and the rate comparisons in the, the package tonight. In terms of the future meetings, you've got the awards, the art awards in there. Our next board meeting is January the 25th. The CAB meeting is January the 17th. Okay, so we'll need a, we'll have a, probably, a round robin, I think, to probably set that. And then-
Yeah, I think if we can get the next couple of weeks, if we can get the annual schedule and one, you check.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, yeah.
Now, I did put on here the return of the Town, to the Town of Reading Subcommittee. We need, we probably should go back now and schedule another meeting among all the, the subcommittee members. So I asked Tracy to kind of sit around and find everybody's available dates, everybody, at this point. I did talk to Dan Enzinger in church on this Sunday, and I just told him that this is all we're trying to do-
Okay.
...at this point, so, just to get dates together, and so we can all meet. It'll probably be sometime in January. I doubt we can have it this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. The 25th of December would be good, but, you know, I don't, I don't think that would work.
No.
So we need to schedule that meeting again.
Are you open that?
Okay, all right. Do we have anything else for regular session? You want to add anything?
No, this is good, thank you.
Okay, welcome, good to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, very good.
Want to make a motion?
Yes.
Move to adjourn the regular session?
Uh, no, how about move the, with the board going to executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, of course. Move to, hit the board, move into executive session.
Uh, read the rest of the motion, read the rest of the motion, please. So we're legal.
Moved that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Seconded motion?
All right. Let's add after purchase of real property and discussion thereon. Okay?
Do I have to leave?
What?
I have to leave now, right?
Okay, yes, you can leave now.
No.
Your permission.
From, from executive session, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of going into exec session, Mr. Sempec?
Aye.
Mr. Senoine?
I.
Mr. O'Rourke, aye. We will adjourn to the other room. Thank you, everybody.
Tracy, shall we bring our iPads with us?
Um, yeah.